We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council to order on June 30, 2023 at 3:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we provide an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the City Secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. City Secretary Hicks has anyone completed a card?
No, sir.
Okay. If there's anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item, is there anyone present? There is not. Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the City Manager. City Manager, forward.
Thanks, Mayor Protim.
So far, it's okay?
You're doing great. Power tie on, it's working. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, or Mayor Protim and Council. I do not have any changes on the agenda today, and I don't believe Jennifer does either, do you? Okay, good. We didn't clear that ahead of time. We do have two public hearings. The first one, Galen Price, will cover later in the business session. It's to receive input on our draft 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan. And the second public hearing will be covered in the work session by Clint Peters. We have 36 resolutions, quite a grouping today, and I'm going to highlight a few of them, the first of which is Resolution 460, which would select Design Workshop to perform park planning and design services for the Hart-Patterson track area on the side of the former Floyd Casey Stadium. The review team, the staff team that's evaluated submissions by firms from all over the country has recommended Design Workshop as our recommended firm. You may not have heard of this firm before, so I wanted to introduce you to them for a moment. They are nationally recognized, and have worked on some pretty neat projects, including the Blue Hole Regional Park in Wimberly, Texas. You've been there, it's beautiful. Titletown Plaza in Green Bay, right outside Historic Lambeau Field, as well as the Houston Arboretum and Nature Center. Council has previously given us guidance on this park, that we want to create a regional park site at the side of the old Floyd Casey Stadium with a variety of features, including a focus on all abilities, features that allow persons with disabilities to enjoy outdoor recreation. So that'll be a particular interest to Design Workshop team and the city staff involved. I did want to highlight that we anticipate the public engagement session starting pretty quickly. Tom's got an aggressive schedule on this one, with public engagement starting this summer. Conceptual design will be done in about four months, and with construction beginning in early 2025 on this park. The design services on the agenda today are being funded out of our existing bond allocation and won't exceed $2.995 million.
Thank you for mentioning the all-inclusive park. City Manager, it's something I think the council and I have been pushing for quite a while. Waco doesn't have an all-inclusive park, and I think it's a great place for it, center of Waco and the heart of Waco, and it'll be accessible to everyone and to the new development project and homes and parks that are going to be across the street from the inclusive park. Thank you for mentioning that. I'm excited about it.
Yeah, it should make for a pretty remarkable new park asset. Somebody said we're kind of in a golden age of parks, and I think that's well said.
Councilmember Rodriguez on that, too, that our commitment here, I think, is demonstrated by the firm that we're hiring, top-notch, and the monetary commitment. We want this to be a world-class park near the Floyd Casey Development. Appreciate your work.
Thanks. The next highlight I wanted to make is actually a kind of a collection of resolutions. It's 462 through 466. It involves a number of vehicle purchases. I'm highlighting the first set, the first set, which is items 462, 463, and 464, because they would see us grow our electric fleet, which is currently, we have 12 electric vehicles in the city fleet currently. Those three items, though, would add an additional five EVs to the fleet, bringing us to 17 EVs in the city fleet. That would be two Ford Lightnings, which would be our first electric trucks in the fleet, two more Chevy Bolts, which we've added several of those recently and really enjoy those vehicles, as well as a all-electric transit van for the, and these will be used in the safety facilities and engineering teams. So that'll be our first Ford Lightnings, as well as our first electric transit vans. Item 465 is for-
City Manager Ford, may I stop you right there and just ask, would there be the opportunity for a council ride-along slash test drive of said Ford Lightnings?
Yes, I can probably work that out. We'll go look at some various construction sites, because I believe they have good ground clearance, as I understand it, just about an inch less ground clearance than a traditional four-wheel-drive truck. Is that right, Ryan? Yeah, okay, I thought I was right on that one. But no, we'd love to actually bring out the whole 17 vehicles once they're received and have a show-and-tell day out, maybe on a council day, so the council can see each of the EVs that we will have in service as that continues to grow.
Can I ask a question? Are we going to have the, I don't know, I guess you call them charge stations? Are we going to have any besides at the, our departments, at our vehicle fleet departments? Are we going to have them around the city? Or how is that going to work? If the vans or vehicles need a charge, are they going to have to come all the way back to the department? Or will we have places within the city for us to do this, charge them up?
Sure, sure. We do, of course, the vehicles on the agenda will be able to be charged at multiple locations, but not public chargers, which I think is where your questions aim at, more on the public charger side. Why don't we do this? Why don't I have staff write up an informal report on the status of public charging additions? Because we are doing some pretty neat things related to public charging, grant applications as well as installations. So, Ryan, if you'll mark that down for a future IR, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, and those of us on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Andrea and I are on that.
I'm supposed to be on that, too, but I missed the last one.
Josh, I think we're all on that, or will be. We're doing a lot of interesting things with federal grants on EV stations, public EV stations, that we can incorporate into that.
I was wondering who's going to play the electric vehicle for that, too, as well?
Yeah, we'll incorporate that in the IR and do a comprehensive look at that.
Okay.
The, oh, go ahead.
Did you have anything else to say about the-
I'm going to talk about 465 and 466, but if you're on EVs, go right ahead.
I'll jump in the middle of it, so you can finish with the EVs. I just think the, and several years ago, we all felt the need for an energy guidance document that we put in place, what, three years ago, maybe, that I think we're starting to see the fruition of thoughtful review of alternative fuel vehicles as these fleet units reach the end of their useful life. And some people have gotten frustrated that we haven't done it fast enough, but I mean, I think we've taken the position, as they, as they reach the end of their useful life, we will thoughtfully review availability, the serviceability, the maintenance costs, and a lot of these things have a long wait time, but we're starting to see, yeah, you know, these are coming in, but it's not because we've just, you know, been waiting and waiting to do it. We've been evaluating it as we go forward. So I think we're getting some good, some good value for the taxpayers, and we're not just doing this because we want to do electric vehicles, we're doing it because it's the best option, which I think is the best way to, to use objective measurable criteria to deploy these EVs units. But go ahead with the last two.
Yeah, well said. Item 465 is from the police department to order six additional Ford Police Hybrids, and wanted to update you, that'll actually add to the current fleet of 39 police hybrid vehicles that the PD is currently using, and we have an additional 58 hybrids in the police department on order, which, if my math serves me right, which is dangerous, Nick, right?
Over 80.
Yeah. I think it's 100. 100-plus. Somebody can check me. But those are, those are hybrid frontline police units. Item 465 also includes the purchase of five Ford Police Pickups, which will be the first time we've used Police Pickups in a while, I believe, and those were chosen specifically because they meet the needs of the PD and are available for immediate delivery. I noted that we had 58 hybrid vehicles on order for police, and there is a need to move on a different model type to get a few vehicles in hand more quickly.
Bradley, sorry. I hesitate to ask this, because I was telling Officer Gans before the meeting, I didn't want to direct any questions his way, but as we are looking at the hybrid pickup trucks, I'm assuming that is, it is an availability and overall performance decision being made there for the hybrid pickup truck versus the full-electric truck that we're getting for the city fleet. Is that correct?
I'm going to let, Ryan, you want to take that?
Yes, sir. The pickup trucks that are in Agenda Item 465 are actually regular ICE vehicles, they're not, they're not hybrids, the pickup trucks aren't the, the, the other Fords in that Agenda Item are the hybrids, the SUVs. These are special, the pickup trucks are a special version that Ford is putting out that are pursuit-rated. They sit a little lower to the ground than the Lightnings do. The Lightnings are all-wheel-drive and have a little more ground clearance, but the police version are pursuit-rated, so they sit a little lower to the ground, have a little better handling, and upgraded components for police use, so they're kind of a different animal.
Gotcha. That sounds great. I just wanted to clarify that as we're talking through the sort of different tiers of vehicles we're using across the city, so thanks for that.
Then I wanted to highlight Agenda Item 466, which is the purchase of an all-in-one flameless pothole patcher apparatus. Again, another piece of equipment we need to demonstrate for the council when we get it in.
You've got to find a pothole, you think there's one in the city?
We have a few potholes. I think the flamethrower version might have been cooler, but this one is flameless. No, the truck uses a electric heating system that creates a safer work environment, as you might imagine, for the staff utilizing the equipment. As Mayor Protim mentioned, all of these acquisitions are in alignment with the recommendations from the city's fleet study, which factor in things like vehicle availability, reliability, the ability for local repairs, and the total cost of ownership of each model. And so we are staying consistent with the council's vision for selecting vehicles. Last resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 479, which would authorize the purchase of 148 acres of property along the Brazos River at Buster Chatham Road at, near Riverbend Lane for $4.266 million. This project, or this purchase is moving forward to support the future addition of a new wastewater treatment plant to divert flows, wastewater flows generated in the China Spring area from passing through miles and miles of, through the city and to the WMR's treatment plant. And I'll kind of illustrate this for a minute. Up in that top, kind of center portion of the map, you see the blue area, that's the property that, that we'd like to purchase, and the flow we're attempting to divert is everything in the yellow in the East Bank Interceptor, and the WMR's plant is kind of off the screen in the bottom right. So essentially, I'm going to treat the wastewater in the blue that generates out in the China Spring area, so it doesn't have to flow through the yellow, which will save capacity in the East Bank Interceptor and in the WMR's treatment plant, which will hopefully allow us to at least delay or maybe even avoid placing a parallel line along the East Bank Interceptor, which, as you might imagine, would be quite disruptive for downtown and east Waco if and when we had to do that. One thing to note about the potential future wastewater treatment plant is it will be a Bullhide-style plant, which is a small-scale plant. Anybody who wants to see a Bullhide-style plant, you can go out to the property, call me, I'll take you out there, but they only treat a few million gallons a day, so it's not like a large wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I'll comment on this one, City Manager. The city grows, we have growing infrastructure needs, and as that map shows, the China Spring neighborhoods and the West Highway 84 neighborhoods, we need to be thinking about infrastructure in urban areas as well, repairing and what we have in the urban infrastructure, but this will serve that area for years and years to come. So as we think about this China Spring area, the wastewater, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment, roads, there's a lot of, there's a lot of expense to a growing, a growing city. But sequencing this, right now, we're acquiring the property, we'll be permitting it, I guess, trying to get it permitted over the next few years. And again, not a, not an inexpensive proposition here. These are, these are expensive, large-scale projects, and we'll be bringing it back to council when we figure out exactly what this thing is going to look like. But as Bradley said, a lot like the Bullhide Treatment Plant down in West Highway 84, which is, it's already kind of a state-of-the-art deal, and I'm sure technology has advanced even further as we get this one online. But yeah, we're doing a necessary thing here.
All right. Today, we have 10 ordinances on the agenda, three are first readings and seven are second readings. I'll walk through the first readings quickly. Ordinance 480 would establish administrative departments, which is a requirement of the Waco City Charter on an annual basis. This year, we're noting a few changes, including the creations of, the creation of a facilities department, a fleet department, as well as the removal of the Animal Services Department, which is now a division of the police department. Second ordinance is 481, which would establish the Parks Performance Fund, which will help us as an organization provide insight into the operations and performance of various parks' department functions. Last ordinance is Ordinance 482, which would authorize a developer participation agreement with Big H Properties to support the oversizing of drainage improvements for development in Council District 5 in the Harris Creek-South Boski watershed. This agreement would provide up to $517,000 to replace and oversize an existing drainage culvert, as well as add a new drainage culvert, each of which will improve drainage conditions for the existing neighborhoods in that area. Mayor Protim and Council, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any questions you might have.
Ordinance 481, is this something new, or how is that going to work? I mean, I read it and I read the ordinance, but I still need a little clarification on how this is going to work and who's doing this and why.
Sure. Good question, Councilmember. Paul, you want to take that?
Sure. Councilmember, this new fund that we're creating will take all of the functions in the Parks Department that we currently charge a fee for and move those into a separate fund so that we can monitor the cost recovery in that fund. It becomes very transparent in terms of the revenues coming in and the expenses going out. This is something that's common in many cities today, is a way to assess the cost of service for different park services that are provided and to keep track of those from a business standpoint.
Okay. I know that there's several parks that we have that don't have revenue, so how is that going to work for these particular parks?
These are, these are not for what you might call a general neighborhood parks or city parks. These are for operations that collect revenue, charge a fee for a service, for example, rec centers, and some recreation activities where you charge a team fee, for example, those types of things. But general city parks that are free to the public would not be in this fund, they would continue to stay in the general fund.
What was that last statement?
They'll be accounted for and budgeted for in the general fund. General city parks will be in the general fund. The Parks Performance Fund will only be those activities and services of the Parks Department for which a fee is charged.
Okay, and so if there's no fees charged on some of the parks, then we don't have anything to worry about, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
When we, one of the purposes, from a management standpoint, while we like to create these funds, is to help us set goals. So for instance, the Mammoth Site, right now, to know if the Mammoth Site is 30% self-sufficient or 60% self-sufficient, you've got to dive deep in the Parks Department budget and kind of bifurcate each line item, and by establishing a performance fund, it will take all of those expenses and revenues and place them in a very cleanly, easy-to-manage-and-review fund, similar to what we do for Texas Ranger Hall of Fame or the Cameron Park Zoo.
And if by chance, some of the revenue doesn't quite up to expectations, we'll still help them out with our general fund?
Sure, yeah. The only fund, minus utility funds, that where their revenues, or their expenses equal their revenues or better, recently, the Cottonwood Creek Golf Club Fund has been profitable, but most of all of our performance funds see a subsidy each year. It just helps us to manage in a way that says, okay, should that, is our goal 30% or 40% or 50% subsidy if we can allocate those line items more clearly?
Yeah, as I read this one, I'm very supportive of this, because I like the idea of creating sort of a cost center, a profit center around some of our parks. And again, I think a priority will be definitely free use for the neighborhood kids and the neighborhood, neighborhoods to use these, but to the point that we can activate those, particularly the baseball, because we did, I think, we did, we're doing a whole study, right, Jonathan, on the baseball fields that we have, and with a 12-year-old, I've been to baseball tournaments all over the north-central Texas, and I see how people are activating in the weekends and making some profit off of those ballfields, and to the extent we can do that, or at least start measuring if we can do that, I'm totally supportive. But I still agree with Alissa here, that we, priorities should be free use for the neighborhood kids to be using, but when they're not using them, let's try to figure out something else to do with them.
I just wanted, you hit, I didn't want to say it, but I just want to make sure our baseball parks are, you know, a lot of our baseball parks, the organizations that use them do not charge, so I just wanted to make sure that they're kept up as well because they don't charge like other interests and other revenue in the parks, but I just want to make sure our baseball parks are kept up to date and up to beautiful standards, and some of them do not charge, so there's no way they make revenue, unless in your lease agreement, you change it. But for right now, the lease agreements with the baseball organizations, they cannot raise funds or charge to go into those ballfields. That's my understanding, right, Lisa?
I apologize, I didn't have a microphone next to me. So I'm looking over those contracts right now to understand those better, and when Jonathan and I spoke last week, we talked about concessions at Cotton Palace, and we're going to see how we can add that into the next year's use agreement.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments on resolutions or ordinances for City Manager Ford? The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023-444 through Resolution 2023-479. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
There is one resolution that, it's not really big, but 474, I think we should bring that forward because it's a contribution from a resident to the city, and he did it because he wanted to, my understanding of reading the, the resolution. I just thought we need to recognize that contribution from a city of Waco resident to the city for sidewalks.
Do you want to recognize him now in the review?
Well, no, I just wanted us to, yeah, yeah, we can vote on that separately. That might be a, I think it was a $25,000 contribution to the city for sidewalks, and I don't ever remember seeing someone donate, you know, to the city for sidewalks, but I just thought that we should vote on that separately and bring that forward to thank him personally for doing this.
Okay. So any, any other resolutions being pulled or removed? Okay, consent agenda includes Resolutions 2023-444 through Resolutions 2023-479, except for 2023-474, which will be voted on separately. Anything else we need to do there? Next item on the agenda is our work session items, 2023-435 through 2023-438. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Our first work session, 435, is going to be a discussion of the development of the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. We'll have several folks joining us at the table. I believe much of the discussion will be led by Nick Sarpey, our Finance Director, but he's joined to his left by Missy Pashaski, our Director of HR, to her left, Morgan Young from Lockton Companies, and I believe to Nick's right, oh, there he is, yeah, Paul Kane coming down, Assistant City Manager, to Nick's right. So looking forward to this, this team continues to make good progress on the development of the budget, which we anticipate filing that on July 11th, the day before my birthday, by the way. Andrea knows. And today's session will focus on one of our most important budget elements, both from the dollar standpoint, but also to getting the job done standpoint, and that relates to employee compensation, as well as employee benefits, and also retiree benefits. So I'm looking forward to this discussion, and I'll turn it over to Nick.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protim and Council. As Bradley said, we're here to talk about the 23-24 budget and continue the discussions that we've been making our way through slowly but surely. We're going to start with salaries and benefits, and so I'm going to turn it over to Missy.
Good afternoon. Missy Pashaski, Human Resources Director. I'll be talking about employee salary and benefits and what we're proposing in the upcoming year's budget. Wanted to first cover a few slides, talking about where we started, when we started looking at this in this year's budget, looking at employee pay increases hitting 4.6%, burnout in the public sector being 20% higher than that in the private sector, and salary and benefits being in the top things that matter most to employees when they're looking for an employer, looking to stay with an employer, and also recruiting and retention are still top priority for organizations, but especially for public sector employers. We spent some time studying our workforce, and the fastest-growing sector of our workforce is our employees that have been employed from zero to five years, and the cost to replace an employee, according to the Society of Human Resource Management, is anywhere from six to nine months of the salary for that position, to find someone and to train them to execute that position. The goals we looked at and the priorities we set for going into the budget were to address salary and general inflation via salary increase, to minimize the cost of health insurance to employees, to continue to build on our recruitment and retention strategies, and to evaluate retiree benefits. So where we propose to be. For salary of increases, we're looking at at least 5% for all employees to help us to remain competitive and to fill our vacancies. We currently have approximately 205 full-time vacancies, with 60 of those being in police and fire, and we're also looking at 5% to help us retain our current workforce. We're looking at market-based adjustments for fire and police, and we're still currently in negotiations with fire and police. Just some salary metrics. The bottom chart shows the city's increases since 2003. Last year's increase in 2022, the 6% was the highest increase- Last year's increase in 2022, the 6% was the highest increase we had given since 2008. This year, the 5% would match, the 2008 percentage. The top chart shows World at Work, which is an organization that focuses on employee compensation. They do salary survey budgets, and it shows what they have surveyed since 2016 in salary survey budgets. And even with this year's 5%, when you stack it up against it, we're still slightly a little less than what World at Work has seen given to employees over the last several years. We've had lots of discussions around TMRS. The city has received our contribution letter for this year's rate. It's 13.92, which is slightly higher than last year's rate of 13.67. The city does budget at 15% to help with the unfunded liability, to help get that down. We are, there's been a lot of focus around the TMRS COLA, to adopt a COLA. It happens in December. It would be adopted in December for a January effective date. The Texas Legislature did amend the TMRS Act, and for participating cities, there is a new repeating COLA option available. We have reached out to TMRS and requested estimates for not only the current ad hoc and repeating COLA options, but also this new option that is now available. We're expecting to have those estimates in July and come back with the recommendation late summer, early fall. We've also invited TMRS to come and speak at an upcoming Budget Audit Committee meeting in August. The last COLA that the city adopted was in 2014.
Real quick on that point, I think the last time we had a, we had a budget retreat, was that about a month and a half ago, or maybe a month or two months ago. And repeating COLA at that time was not an option that we were presented, is that, because the legislature just changed it in this last session, in this current session, is that right?
So as part of the current legislative session, they adopted House Bill 2464, which allows you to do a repeating COLA, but it's prospective, whereas the ones that prior to this legislative session we had were, they looked back, there was so much of the ad hoc, but there also were prospective in nature. So the new bill allows you just to go forward with COLAs. So that would have a different cost impact than what the current existing options are. It'd probably be somewhere in the middle between the current, the previous repeating one and the ad hoc, is probably where it'll line up.
And what's the timeline of the decision that council would have to make on this?
Any adjustments to the plan would be effective January 1st, 2024. So we just have to, any ordinance we would do would have to be adopted prior to the end of December.
So it's not necessarily part of the budget or the budget timeline? It's something that just needs to be done in this calendar year?
Yeah, it doesn't fit with the timeline, but it's something obviously we'd want in the budgets that we're prepared for that situation, whatever the council chose to do.
Okay, thank you.
Did y'all already mention that we'll be bringing TMRS representatives to council Budget Audit in August?
In August.
Perfect. And we have estimates on the, now, I think it's nine options that are present for us, as you highlighted, that weren't necessarily all available at the retreat.
Thanks, thank you.
So moving on to health insurance, this slide shows what our current health plan design is, and it also shows what our current employee premiums are, and it also shows the headcount enrolled in each level of coverage. The majority of our employees are enrolled in the employee-only coverage, followed by employee-family coverage. We do have a wellness component to our health insurance plan, so any employee that receives a wellness visit during the year gets a $75 premium discount per month on their health insurance premiums. So at this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Morgan Young with Lockton Dunning. They're our benefits consultant. They've been working with us over the last couple of months. I'm going to turn it over to her for a couple of slides.
Good afternoon. So again, when Lockton took over in February, the first thing that we did was we did a reprojection of claims, and we worked with our actuaries to determine where the plan was currently sitting, and determined it to be underfunded for this current fiscal year. Working with the team, we determined that it was approximately $2.1 million underfunded. And the largest reason for that, obviously, is that claims costs have increased 23% over this last year. We are seeing this with a number of our other cities that we work with. A large reason of that is just a post-COVID environment. We're seeing a lot more folks go into the doctor's office than had gone in in the past just because of the lapse in care that had happened over the last year and a half, two years. Large claims activity, and a large claim is any claim over $100,000, was also one of the primary cost drivers that we are seeing. We're seeing not only the number of claims increase, but also the severity of those claims increase as well. You'll see the number of high-cost claimants that we've had has increased 16%, and then the cost of those claims has increased over 25%. And again, unfortunately, this is a trend that we are seeing across the board. The city does purchase stop-loss insurance to protect against any of that catastrophic claims risk that we have out there. So any catastrophic claims would be protected from the city's financial position. One of the things that we have done to address this is we did a full medical and pharmacy RFP, or Request for Proposal, this year. So we looked at the claims administrator that the city currently has, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, and went out to the marketplace to see if there were any administrators that had more cost and advantageous discounts, services, and then anything that we could do to provide additional savings to the city. We have determined that a move to UMR, which is a company that is owned by United Healthcare, would be the most cost and advantageous move for the city this year. That would be effective on 10/1. We are proposing in this recommendation that we would not make any changes to plan design with the exception of one item. So we have looked at the claims, and we have determined that it would be great if we could offer mental health claims for individuals at a reduced copay. So today, an individual that's going in to see an outpatient mental health clinician is paying $75, and our recommendation is to reduce that to $25. The change to UMR would actually keep the same broad network that we have today. It would just improve the discounts, and so there would be very limited disruption from an employee's standpoint. There would be no increases to employee premiums. And so the overall cost that we are recommending today is the 18.66174. That includes all of the medical and pharmacy claims cost, all of the administration, stop-loss, COBRA, FSA, EAP, and then all of the other costs inside of the Employee Health Insurance Fund. The overall cost to the city would be $1,083,417, and then the city budgets on a per-employee-per-year basis, and that would increase to $8,607. So the percentage-wise, the city would be increasing by 7%, and employees would be increasing by 0% in this recommendation.
Just one question on that, Ms. Young. The physician network stays basically the same, or is identical, or are there some changes? Or, I know that's always, in my experience, it's always been the big factor, nobody wants to have to, when you're changing providers, it's the kind of the worrisome part that everybody frets over. But you're saying it's identical?
It's identical, it's actually a little bit larger, and the discounts are better. So we looked at not only the medical network, but we also looked at the pharmacy network as well, and those pharmacy discounts too, just to make sure from an employee's standpoint that there would be very limited disruption.
That was the question, because I mean, the physicians is one thing, but if the way prescriptions are paid for changes drastically, then that can change the game for our employees.
Yes, so that is one of the big things that we looked at.
And you said that mental health copays would go from 75 to 25?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's just an advantage of the UMR plan over our current plan?
It would be one of the recommendations that we would make for the plan. It doesn't have anything to do with the change to UMR. It would actually just be with the city plan design, making that recommendation to make it more cost-effective for folks to be able to go in and get that mental health care.
I think that's, that's a great idea.
Could I ask a clarifying question? That recommendation, is that included in the 8607 per-employee-per-year cost?
Yes, Councilman.
Awesome. And just, everyone else is saying something, I think this is great. I think any, any chance we have, if we have the means to, you know, improve the lives of our employees through the City of Waco and maintain competitiveness, but also, you know, outside of just for the sake of being competitive as an employer, but for the sake of providing quality service to the people that care for us and care for our city, we should take it. So I, I'm really pleased to see this, and thank you for this presentation so far.
All right, so the financials. So this slide just basically goes, gives a three-year look of the health insurance fund. So you start with fiscal year '22, which is the actual results that were part of the audit financial statements. Original budget, kind of what we're projecting, which rolls into what Morgan was talking about, where we're projecting claims to be significantly higher than we originally budgeted. And then what we're looking at for '24, and 24 factors in the change to UMR. So if you go through everything, you look down at the very bottom, it shows our policy requirements. And it shows that we're in a deficit as far as what our policy requires and where the fund balance is projected to be. And so one of the things we're proposing is to fund that deficit, about $2 million, that we're projecting to have in '24, with transfers from the general fund, the water waste water funds, and solid waste to get us back to whole, which is where we've been the last number of years.
So in summary, for salaries, we're looking at 5% for non-civil service employees, and for fire and police, we're targeting market, and we're still in ongoing negotiations. For the TMRS COLA, rates and costs are still being evaluated. We've requested estimates, and we'll have a recommendation late summer, early fall, and we have invited TMRS to come to an upcoming Budget and Audit Committee meeting. And for health insurance, we're recommending no premium increase for employees. City contribution will increase to cover the additional cost. And this is an intentional recommendation from the city this year to invest in employees and to remain competitive. We're really wanting to try to drive retention and meet employee expectations. Our turnover has been going up the last three fiscal years, and we currently have 400 employees retirement-eligible, and we feel like this is the right thing to do this year. This will be the fourth year in a row that we have not increased employee premiums. After we get through this open enrollment, we are planning to put together a team with Lockton's help of city employees and city staff to start looking at funding and employee funding going forward.
I like these recommendations. I won't say anything about the civil service, since negotiations are still in process, but in terms of non-civil service, I think retention and recruitment are definitely the key right now. I know I was proud that this council last year brought in leave for new parents. I thought that was an exciting improvement, and also just enhancing the overall benefit package to make us an attractive place. But, and I think a second straight year of salary raises, given this environment in terms of wages and salaries and inflation, seems appropriate. And so this, these seem like great recommendations, and if our city manager thinks we can afford it, I say we go for it.
Well, we're, you know, there's priorities that the council laid out at the retreat. If y'all remember, y'all voted with your dots, Darius, if you need to, I can get you some red dots. Those are the best ones, I think. But employee compensation was, was, if not number one, number two, right behind infrastructure and public safety. And it's, it's number one in our hearts too, because we know, like the events that happened over the weekend with trees down at many facilities, fires happening all over town, police needs all over town, you know, the, the way we get the job done is through our employees. And we cannot do the job if they're not well compensated and they don't have good healthcare or mental health options. And so we find a way to make these investments, because we find them to be top of, this is top of mind. So I do believe we can afford them. That's as long as Ryan continues to do a good job in negotiations with police and fire. But he's getting close there, and I look forward to updating the council soon on where we are with each of those entities as well. And I very much appreciate, by extension, I know each of our employees appreciate the investment the council makes in each of them. It makes a big difference in their lives when they can focus on their job and not focus on worrying about their paycheck or worrying about their health insurance. So appreciate what y'all do in regards to that.
Yeah, I'll just cap that off by saying, yeah, I think these are just good business decisions, right? These salary adjustments, we're getting pressure right now from inflation, workforce shortage, retention challenges, and we still have some rightsizing of position comp that we're doing, that we addressed a lot of it last year, but we're still doing some of that this year. But all those combined, we want to have, we pride ourselves on having a great city staff and great city workers. And I don't think we're doing anything extraordinary here. We're just trying to keep up with the market and, and treat our employees right, and just get in the market, as I see it, stay in the market. The health, the health insurance switchover, I think, makes a lot of sense, and not only having the employees have an opportunity to kind of keep the same network, but this is like the cheapest one, or the, or the least expensive alternative we could find too. So we're, I think we're killing two birds with one stone here in addressing the taxpayers, trying to find the, the low-cost alternative here, and still keep the quality of care that we have for our citizens. The health insurance fund, I just want to make sure that it's about $2 million, but we're pulling that from existing reserves, right? Or does this need to be?
That's correct.
Funded, okay. We're not having to fund that $2 million out of general next, next year, we're pulling that out of existing.
Well, we'll have to do a budget amendment to move the money, but it'll pull from existing reserves.
Okay. And then, yeah, the retirees, just the TMRS and the COLA, we're still evaluating that. We'll come up with something in the next couple of months. But great, great, great work so far. Let's talk about, oh.
I just have a question. Several years ago, you know, my history with the council, there were some retirees that did not fall into a certain category because they hadn't, I'm not, I don't remember quite, but there was several retirees that we had to treat differently, and we had to give them what we gave the other retirees, but there was about 15 or 20 of them, maybe. I was just wondering if we still have some of those retirees alive, or has that particular retiree, have they gone away? I know we used to talk about them, and I know this was before y'all's time. Jennifer, you looking at me like that, but Riley, this was before your time. But I remember the council talking about this particular retirees that we, for some reason, they were treated differently. I'm not sure if it was because they weren't able at that time to put money into the retirement fund, something along those lines. Ryan, do you know what I'm talking about?
There, there was a group early on that didn't pay into social security, and so they were treated differently? That's about all I can remember.
Cosmo Rodriguez, we're just going to look into that, maybe get back to you.
Okay. I was just wondering if there were any of them left, because I haven't seen anything here that tells me we're still including them in the retirement benefits.
Jeff does the analysis on this whole COLA/TMRS thing. Let's try to pull, because we haven't looked at it in seven years, something like that.
Do you remember Jim talking about?
No, because we haven't reviewed it since I've been on council, so.
Okay.
It'll be good to get a, maybe not a deep, deep dive, but a little bit of a dive.
Just a little, no, it'll cost too, I just wonder if there's any of those retirees still alive.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, and, you know, several 20-year directors around the room, and I'm getting puzzled looks, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go back in the archives. Frank's back there, he's been there.
Thank you.
67 years, I thought, but, but that's about right, yeah. He's ageless wonder back there. We will, we'll go back in the archives and see what it is, Alice, and get you an answer when we come back to Budget Audit here in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good, thank you. And Nick, thank you for this presentation, and you always do such good work for the council, and I appreciate this, and I appreciate your work.
On to the tax rate.
All right, tax rate. All right, so just taking you back to where we were at when we started with the budget retreat. So just as a reminder, the tax rate helps support all the wonderful services that residents receive, whether it's parks and recreation, fire, police, streets, library, planning development, health district, our utility funds that, our enterprise funds that receive funding from the general fund, as well as administrative staff, are all included within the general fund or supported by the general fund in some manner. So taking you back about a year, so last year, as part of the budget, you decreased the property tax rate to 76 cents, which was the lowest, which is the lowest rate in over a decade. You also approved the following tax relief measures. You increased local option homestead exemption from 10 to 15%. You increased local option homestead exemption from 10 to 15%. You increased the senior exemption from $5,000 to $50,000. You established the disabled exemption of $50,000 with a total cost of the exemptions of about $5.8 million, which was the equivalent to about 4.5 cents for the current tax year. And fiscal year '23, 1 cent on the property tax rate generated about $1.25 million. We also wanted to just reiterate the slide. So this shows the property tax makeup for a resident that lives within the Waco ISD school district that, you know, the bulk of the tax rate that a person pays, proper taxes, go to the school districts and other jurisdictions. But the city of Waco, as I'll repeat again, is the only service that residents receive services from on a daily basis. And then the slide shows the various rates of our tax rate components. So on the top in the graph is the percentage, it shows the makeup of the maintenance and operations, which is in green, and the debt rate in blue. So with the adjustments that we've been making, which has been that about penny and a half shift in the debt rate, we've brought up the debt rate to be about 18.5% of the total tax rate component. And in the chart, the table below, you'll see the changes in the tax rate since fiscal year '15. And you'll see the last two years, we've been able to reduce the tax rate. And so one of the things that we've talked about a lot is increasing the debt rate to be similar to what our peer cities are. And so this chart just shows the comparison to the peer cities and the makeup of their debt rate to their own M rate and showing that we're significantly below all of our peer cities. And so then this slide shows for '23, the makeup of the general fund adopted budget and the portion that's covered by property taxes. So you'll see only 44% of the general fund budget is covered by property taxes, which isn't sufficient enough to even cover the cost of public safety. All right, so where we're at right now. So proposed fiscal year '24 values and tax rate information. All right, so this slide shows our certified rolls for the city as well as the TIF for the last three years, as well as the preliminary estimates that we received from MACAD in April, as well as our current expectations of values. And so our current expectations includes expectations that some of the value will be lost based off of the review process and petition that taxpayers are allowed to go through. So we're projecting a value of about $13.7 million at this point in time, which is about $1.5 billion more than our certified rolls last year. And you'll also notice that on the TIF side, those projections have about a half a billion dollar growth in their valuations. And in the stack chart, you'll see the breakout of the four TIFs and their value. So the largest TIF that we have is TIF 1, followed by TIF 4, the newest TIF. And then just a small little piece is TIF 3. All right, so this is what the revenues look like based on those expected values. So we're expecting, based on those values and maintaining a tax rate at 76 cents, that it would generate about $84.8 million in revenue for the maintenance operations for the general fund and about $19.5 million to cover our current debt service. So based on this and the shift that we've been working on, you'll see that there's a slight uptick in the debt rate compared to the current rate. Because on the very end, on the right side is, my right side is the fiscal year '24 estimates. So about 7,000ths of a cent increase in the debt rate. So as we continue to move our shift of our debt rate to match what our peers are doing. And so this slide just brings forward our makeup that we're proposing are included in the budget compared to the '23 rates for all the peer cities as they're still going through the same process that we are as far as establishing their rates and looking at what they're doing. So we're moving a little bit closer to our peers, but we're still behind. So we still have some room to make up there.
Is there a particular timeline that, when will you be satisfied?
It's a good question, council member. I think as we move towards the average, I think what we have projected in our five-year estimates that we are working on is around that 21%, 22% number, which puts us, if we were moving a penny and a half a year, would put us in that five- or six-year window. However, as he just showed on previous slides, the actual debt rate is not increasing at that 1.5 cent per year number. And that's primarily because values have exceeded our projections, which, which is a good thing. But also from a debt management standpoint, makes it a little challenging because it, we don't want to sell too much debt and get in the hole. So I think to answer your question, in that five- to six-year window, at a penny and a half a year, would get us close to that 22% number.
All right, so and then putting the property tax revenues and the general fund in perspective compared to the public safety budget, you'll see here on the slide that $84.8 million for property tax revenues that, based on the values and keeping the tax rate the same, what we're projecting comparative to the estimated public safety budget, a little over $97 million. And you'll see over, since fiscal year '21 through '24, the change in the property tax revenues compared to the change in public safety. So you can see that the property tax revenues are not keeping pace with the change in public safety. And I will add, over that time, we've added over 39 positions to public safety. 12 police officers last two years in the budget, one commander, and then 12 firefighters for Fire Station 15.
And council, if I might just jump in real quick on this one. You know, the point of these slides comparing to public safety is, is really to inform the public and equip the council in terms of questions that you might receive. You know, the property taxes are certainly a political issue in Austin, as we all know. And we think it's important to point out that one of our most fundamental requirements as a city is to provide public safety to our citizens. And all of our property tax revenue on the maintenance and operations side doesn't pay for that. So we use other revenues to help pay for those costs. I think that's just important as, you know, the public hears these presentations and understands property taxes and where the money goes, that they have some frame of reference in terms of, you know, where our public safety obligations are to the citizens and what the property tax revenues are in comparison to that. So that's why we do this. We, as Bradley pointed out earlier, you know, public safety salaries are important to us and equipping them with the right tools that they need to provide the services that they're providing to the public is certainly important and a priority of the council and a priority of every city. And we just show these comparisons to, to, I think, make the point that property taxes are just one funding source for the city and were it not for all the others, sales tax and other things and other ways for us to generate revenue to pay for other services we provide, that allows us to continue to support our public safety folks. So I just wanted to make that point.
All right, so where are we at? So as valuations firm up, we'll continue to look at the tax rate. So we'll, the budget will be submitted prior to the final certified rolls, which are due July 25th by state statute, and we'll be spending the budget the 11th of July. So we'll come back in August depending on where the valuations go and update and provide you a reconciliation of where our estimates were comparative to where the final certified rolls were. And we'll make sure we ensure that there's a balance between the tax rate and your priorities.
Before we get to the calendar, Holmes here, I just wanted to comment a bit on this tax. Now, thanks for the analysis, great presentation. And I liked your lead, one of your lead slides was just the big, it was, I'll say historic. It was a historic adjustment we made in exemptions last year that, for homesteads and over 65s. I think most homeowners saw an actual, at least on the city, on the city portion of their tax bill saw a whole-dollar reduction in what they paid. And that amounted to right at $6 million in whole dollars in funds that normally would have come in without the exemption. So $6 million adjustment last year. So we're trying to, I don't think we can get that, it'll be tough to get that creative this year. I'm seeing with what we just talked about on salaries and comp, which is most of, most of anybody who runs a business out there knows that salary and comp is the biggest part of your, biggest part of your budget. The other part here I want to talk about are the debt considerations and how much, this, at least, this council wants to be very careful about how it uses debt, particularly in this rising interest rate environment, as more of those funds will now go to pay interest and not the principal that we need to, to fund these, to fund whole-dollar projects. And as we see the, I go back to that, the number that just jumped out at me in this whole deal is back on page 40. The debt, we have debt rate there, but that's really debt service, debt service requirement of $19.5 million. That's kind of the key we're coming back to on, what do we, this is the amount we need just to carry our debt load or our debt incurment. And there's nice trends there, obviously, in the total tax levy there also. So that top number going from 77 to 85. But as we just talked about, a million dollars here and a million dollars there, and, I mean, these things add up quickly.
Pretty soon you're talking about real money?
Real money is like loading up here. But anyway, I appreciate the analysis and the thoughtful process that we're going through. And then just managing our operation, our operational funds that we need to be thinking about and then also keying in on that debt service. And the little silver lining is that our sales tax continues to be pretty strong and stabilized a bit in the last few years and increasing every year. So I'm happy about that. And as we, as we go through this budget dialogue, these kind of reports are just great. I'm still hopeful there's a little bit of room for some rate relief, but, you know, we'll see. We'll put all the numbers together and see what all fits.
Yeah, I'm also hopeful if, if there's a way to, to reduce the rate somewhat. It's been nice to be able to show that to our taxpayers the last two budget cycles. However, I know it must be frustrating from a city staff budgeting perspective to get all our council advocacy on spend more money on parks, spend more money on personnel, spend more money on upgrading our roads, and then say, and can you please cut the tax rate while you're ready to? So I know that's a difficult balance. I know we've got a great team. If there is a way to see a tax rate reduction, I think that'd be a great way to demonstrate that. But we'll see where we land as y'all go through this process.
Yeah, the last thing, Josh, you hit on a good point. The, we've identified, I think, $2.5 to $3 billion worth of projects that we would like to work on. And we can chip away at those, you know, from 70 to 100 million a year when the rates are low and we can afford that debt service. But it's what this council does is try to prioritize and pick out the ones where we can, that will have the most impact for the city. And it's not easy, it's not an easy deal. So I appreciate the staff's work on this.
All right, so the budget calendar. So next week, we will have a special budget audit committee meeting. And we'll talk about the capital improvements program, we'll talk about debt, we'll talk about the street fee and street capacity. Then on the 11th, the city manager will present the budget, which is 48 days before council votes to adopt the budget. On the 14th is our planned filing with the city secretaries and posting on the website. And then on July 25th, we'll receive the certified rolls from MACAD. And then we'll be back on August 1st to talk about the rolls, certified tax rolls, the filed budget, and then update any potential changes to the budget based on the certified rolls. We'll have the resolution setting the date for the public hearing on the budget, which will be August 29th. And then we'll have the second reading of two ordinance that you have on today's agenda. Then we'll meet again on August 8th for budget audit, and that's where we'll have TMRS. We've invited them to come discuss the different COLA options, as well as TMRS in general. We'll go over any outstanding items or items that have come up. And we'll also have our quarterly financial update. On the 15th of August, we'll have the resolution setting the date for the public hearing on the tax rate. So the bolded items are meetings where you guys would take votes and make decisions. And so the date for the tax rate is scheduled for September 5th. And then on the 29th, as I mentioned, would be the public hearing and vote on the budget, as well as a public hearing and vote on the resolution on the municipal drainage utility fee schedule revision. Any questions?
Any questions? I think we ask them as we went along there. But anything else? Councilmember Ewing? Councilmember Borderie? Councilmember Bierfield?
All right.
We're good. Thanks for the update.
All right, our next work session's going to be work session 436, discussion of water service line inventory for lead and copper. We've got Lisa Tyer, Director Utilities, coming up. And I didn't realize this, but we've got Eric Pena here as well. IT manager and dashboard creator deluxe. Eric does a tremendous job. I guess he's going to show off his, his work here in a minute.
Yes.
Eric is the brains behind many of our dashboards that get made, him and his team. So I'm looking forward to that presentation. Today, we're going to focus in on the EPA's new lead and copper rule revision, which has created a significant new effort by city staff to identify, test, and support the replacement of lead service lines. And I think I'm going to let Lisa kick it off and walk you through the presentation.
All right, well, I'm just going to skip that first slide then, and we're going to move right into the content. We're going to go over the sources of lead in drinking water, current lead and copper management, what we're currently doing, lead and copper, the revised rules, the service line inventory, the app and the dashboard, which is amazing. And Eric's going to demonstrate that for y'all. What happens when lead is found? The communication that we've developed to go out to the community, schools and daycares, funding for service line replacement, key points, and then questions. You can ask questions along the way, but we always have that questions. Sources of lead in drinking water. I don't often read during presentations, but I am going to read this one. Lead can become a potential risk for drinking water in those homes that have a lead or galvanized service line or pipes that contain lead. Waco has removed all known public lead service lines. However, we still find them from time to time. Prior to 1986, it was common for contractors to use lead solder and fixtures containing lead. And then until 2014, brass faucets and fixtures labeled lead-free actually had 8% lead in them. And so lead, when, when water leaves the water treatment plant, there's no detectable lead in it. So it's not coming from the water, it's not coming from the water treatment process, it is coming from somewhere else. So our current management of this, we have a corrosion control plan. And we have chemicals that are corrosion inhibitors. One of those is caustic, it's quite costly, and we pay for it every year. And it puts a kind of a calcification layer within the pipe itself, which prohibits the leaching of pipe material into the water. So that's one way we do it. The other thing is we're constantly monitoring all these other chemical compounds to make sure we don't have anything that's messing with that calcification of that line and also to make sure that we just don't have anything else that could be causing leaching of the pipe material into the water. We also replace any lead service line when we find it. We also do testing for lead at various locations throughout the city. We are on a reduced testing schedule because our test results are so good. We are required to only test currently 50 sites throughout the city every three years. And then we notify any customer when we find lead pipes that have, that have leached into their water. And it's tested 15 parts per billion. So that's kind of the key number there. So the rule revisions with this, the EPA really wanted to focus in into testing protocols to really look more intensely at where is it most likely to occur? It establishes a lower trigger level to start mitigation earlier. It pushes for complete service line replacement. It requires testings in schools and childcare facilities. And it requires the water system to identify and make public the locations of lead service lines. And our deadline for that is October 16th of 2024. So a service line inventory, we have to determine the material used on the city side of the service line as well as what is on the customer's side of the service line. So in this diagram up here, you can see the water main is kind of running down the middle of the street. Well, from the water main- Well, from the water main to the water meter is what the, is the utilities' responsibility. But from that water meter to the house or the building is the customer's responsibility. But the whole thing is a service line.
So as you draw that distinction, here's where the rest of it was kind of falling apart for me. I get it, anything on the city side of the water meter, 100% our deal, and we need to be replacing those. But this, we're talking about a program that crosses over into the private property?
It, it does cross over to, to some extent. There's nothing mandated that we replace the customer's service line. However, that is really the intent of the regulation, is to get everyone to replace that whole service line if lead is found. And so it, it does cross over in this extent that we have to look just right beyond the meter to determine what their service line material is. And then if we have any concerns, such as maybe it looks like they've, they've done a repair, we then would have to get a write of entry from the customer to go onto their property to pick another spot to dig, to make a real true determination of what that line is closer to their house.
Okay, I get, I mean, we need, we need to have, we need it to be lead-free on both sides and all that. I'm just trying to get comfortable where the city starts and stops and samples and behaves, or gets into the house and all that, but let's keep going.
Okay, so our process for determining the service line inventory, we decided just to use the meter cycles and routes. There's 20 cycles. We started with cycle one, route one, but when we complete that process, and there's over 50,000 meters out there that we're having to investigate, when we complete that process, we will still have to go back and review tab cards and look at maps to make sure that all our assumptions on that service line material are accurate. So this is how the 20 cycles are laid out throughout the city. Right now, we're currently working on cycle four, five, and six. I don't know of the mouse. Yeah, so let's see if I, there's four. Five comes here and has a little bit here, I don't know why, and then six is up here. We've already completed one, two, three, and, and almost, we're almost done with four.
When you say complete, again, remind me, that's every meter or just 50 sites every three years, or?
No, that's every, every meter, we have to determine those service lines.
Got it.
And so the service line inventory requirements, they're due by October 16th of 2024, and we have to create a searchable database so that anybody in the city can go in and put in an address, and they can find out what the service line materials are. That's really where our IT department came in for us. And this is just a few pictures. In the left-hand picture, it, they are pot-holing a service, and really that pot-holing means that there is like a big vacuum, and they're sucking out all the debris and material that they can out of that meter box, rather than having to have somebody dig through, because dirt and mud settles in those meter boxes. Rather than having to have somebody hand dig through all that, we take the, the pot-holing machine out, and it will act as a vacuum and suck all that up. And then somebody actually has to bend over, get down there, and determine what those service lines are. And so I'm going to turn it over to Eric and let him explain the app, and hopefully we can get y'all a visual of what the dashboard looks like that we're using.
Good afternoon, council. Again, Eric Benya, I'm a manager in the IT department in the GIS and Decision Support Department. And if you're not familiar, GIS, I'll use that acronym again, that's Geographic Information System. So it's our digital mapping system is what it is. So we were tasked with, okay, how do we survey 50, over 50,000 meters connections? So what we were able to do is take advantage of our ESRI Enterprise GIS system. So we, we have an enterprise system, we have a lot of tools in place. We didn't have to shop for software, didn't have to develop or set up any new servers, anything like that on the technical side. Everything's in the cloud, and we're able to, to take advantage of that, that agreement we have with ESRI, to develop three applications, really. And the turnaround was pretty quick, since we didn't have to, have to procure any new software. We created a mobile app for the mobile crews to quickly collect information as, as they pop that lid and clean it out, quickly record the information and move on to the next property. We created a quality control application for mid-level managers to kind of do some QAQC, make final determination on whether it's lead or not, and then plan for replacement where we do find lead. And then a dashboard as well, that hopefully I'll be able to show you quickly, kind of a real time, as it's happening in the field, where are we at right now? So here's a few screenshots of the, the mobile app that the field crews are using. It's, it's a smart app, you know, it'll tell you exactly where you're at any moment. You can select, at, at the location, select the address. You can start taking photos once it's clean and ready to go, take your photos, and then collect, most importantly, the city side material and the customer side material as well. We're also collecting city line size, or service line size, excuse me, confirming that, really confirming the line size at, at the box, as well as making any other notes that might be needed. So if everything's good, it's a PVC on both ends or what have you, and it's not lead, hit submit, it goes straight into the database, everything's good, move on to the next house. On average, it takes about five to 10 minutes, from cleaning out on a difficult one, about 10 minutes, to do all that and collect all the information.
So back to that, Mr. Benya, the, the, what we're saying on the material on the customer's side, we're at least taking down anecdotal information on the foot or two-foot that you can see coming out of the meter going to the house, right?
Yeah, they cleared out well enough to be able to determine the, the material. There's some real distinct lead connections that they're looking for, and then other materials as well, they use their, their knowledge over the years to, to determine that, that material.
So if we see a sign that says this is a lead pipe, we take that information down, I'm sure?
Yeah, that, that, I'll show you a map, and it lights up in red, and we take care of it.
But we're, at this stage, we're not taking water samples from the inside of the house, we're just doing regular maintenance?
We, we take, we do have 50 locations that we take sites, we, we take samples from inside the house. What we do is those customers have, I don't want to say been trained, but they have been shown how to take samples correctly, and there are 50 locations, and we leave them the bottles when we need to, and they put them back out and call us and tell us they're, they're ready for us to collect them. This one, the, the new rule will not be that simple.
Got it, thanks.
So we have some rules built in as well, if it is lead, or if it's unknown, or if there's certain, certain criteria that, that the inspectors are entering, it'll automatically flag it and send it for managers to review it and make determinations. So that's what this second application is for. Back at the office, they can pull up as they're going, they can get a call from a guy in the field, hey, I ran into a lead piper, take a look at this one. It shows up on their map right there, and they can address it, research it, and, and determine what needs to be done. So from all that, it's also feeding a dashboard that allows decision makers and directors like Lisa to, to make decisions on how best to prioritize their, their resources, right, to, to get this done by that, that deadline that we have. Oh, let me quickly show where we're at as of last week. So around 12,000, around 12,000 have been inspected, so that's about 25% of our, our whole inventory of, of service lines. We have 37,000 remaining, and we've been at it for about four or five months.
We started in March.
So that gives you an idea. We've done, we've, we started in March, and we've done about a quarter of what we have.
Was there, was there a pattern around the six that you found, or some commonality or location?
Yeah, they were all in the same kind of neighborhood, and that was one of our test streets. So we were working with Eric on the app, and we were like, well, just pick a street and go out there and, and, and see, you know, put the information in there, and let's see how it flows back to the map, and make sure we have everything that we're going to need. And lo and behold, that was kind of what we found. We have found one lead service on the customer side, too.
But the six were actually on the city side?
They were.
Oh, wow.
Okay. So for Lisa's team, we, we've developed a dashboard, and I'll, I'll show you quickly, this is where we're at today, if I can bring it up. There it is. All right, thank you. So if you look down at the very bottom, I don't know if you can, audience can see it, but 50,367 connections. And up here on the left side, we have a green gauge showing where everything is, has been completed, it's good, there's no issues. We've, we've found 13,100 plus that are good. So there's your 20, your 25% approximately. Out of all those, we have, have had 20 that are unknown lead as well. We have a little visual for managers just to quickly see the current progress. That green slowly, slowly is increasing, and it's good, good to see that. Down at the bottom, customer side material types, we have it broken out. So this is everything we've found in the field so far. Majority is going to be PVC, galvanized steel, but Lisa mentioned that one lead down there you see at the bottom, that's one customer side lead that we have found. On the right side, we have the city side material and predominantly copper. As you move down, you can see those six lead, lead down there as well. So we do have six lead lines that have been replaced. Up at the top, there's some just important numbers for managers to keep an eye out on. This is 221 inspections that we've done today. We can also see by hour how they're doing. So if, if, if there's issues, things are slowing down, we can kind of get an idea by hour, or morning, afternoon, how we're doing. Today has been pretty consistent, 30, 35 per hour.
Wow.
We can ultimately expand this, this is hard, hard to read there, but you can also see over time, from, let's see here, March 6th to today, here's how we've done each day as far as just the count on number of inspections, and it looks like April 27th was a great day, 443.
My guess is all the equipment was working that day.
Motivated.
And you can kind of see, actually, we're kind of slow getting used to it, figuring out the routine, and then you ramp up, and you, your production's a lot better as you go, get more staff on, onboard as well, helping. Some other things, we have one case in management review, one's in a replacement status, and six have been replaced. Also quickly show, one last thing, there's a map here showing, if you want to see geographically, okay, where are we? Green is good, all clear. Yellow, or it's kind of like, it looks like a dark yellow or orange almost, that's, that hasn't been visited yet, we, we don't know yet. And there's a few other status categories that we use as it goes through the process. So we can see that one red one in management review. So quickly, you can see where problem issues are, you can maybe determine, hey, there's a neighborhood issue here, because a lot of reds are in this area, you know, those type of things as well. So spatially, you can, you can infer and kind of make some sense and organize your work, as well as just go down and select a property that's completed. And you should see material side for the city, we've determined to be copper, customer side is galvanized steel. And then you have a picture as well of each, each and every one of those connections.
Is, is this live right now, or is this in kind of like beta?
This is not live as far as available to the public, but all city staff, call center staff have access to this, so if there's calls coming in about a property, they can access this and say, here's, here's where we're at.
A few questions, oh, go ahead, Lisa.
So one of the reasons why we haven't made it live yet is because anything that's galvanized, we have to know that we've never had a lead service line in, on the city side in front of that galvanized line. If we've ever had a lead line in front of that galvanized line, we have to treat that galvanized line as if it is also a lead line. And the other thing is if we can't find proof that it, there's never been a lead line there, we still have to treat it like it's a lead line. So you'll see us, we'll use a term called galvanized requiring replacement. Not that necessarily that we're going to replace it, but it's a line that should be replaced.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, that's, that's, that's the application, this is, I think it's been a useful tool, and we're glad to partner with the Utilities Department.
The other thing that we've been doing is if we go out to do any type of meter work, not just a routine reading or a turn-on, but really have to go out to replace a meter or do something, we're also gathering that information at that time. So you'll see some sporadic green dots throughout that mapping where we've been.
Okay, so I guess I was, I had some questions kind of along this line, so I won't ask that, but it sounds like you're kind of diligently and rather rapidly going through day-by-day residences, also commercial and non-residential?
Yes, and it'll even be because we have services outside the city limit, it'll be outside the city limits as well. Anyplace that we provide water to, we will have to have this information.
All, all City of Waco water customers, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And it, and again, we're going to go through this inventory and hopefully have the, the fieldwork portion of it done before the end of the year, but we will still have quite a bit of office work that will have to be done behind the scenes as well. And so we really want to make sure we have as accurate as possible of a database to put out there for the public to view. So we're kind of holding off until we, we feel confident that we're at that point.
Well, and on this, and it also, since you're doing everyone, like I saw in council member Holmes's District 5 out on West Highway 84 out there, it looked, you know, just lit up green, a lot of that is newer housing stock is what I would assume, so I would assume that's essentially PVC country when you're talking piping, right?
Pretty much is, and, and some cities are choosing not to go take a look, but here's the problem with that, is that you have to certify that you know what those lines materials are. And if you don't know what those line materials are, and you're just saying, oh, it was built after this, this day.
Gotta be, gotta be.
It's gotta be, and it's not, then, and somebody comes and audits you for whatever reason for that, or there is an issue, then you basically certified something that's not accurate.
In this way, we can, when, when this is available to the public, once this is, and all your work is complete, you can, we can represent to the public, we've checked this residence, this is what it was. And, and regardless of preconceived notions we may have had, or, you know, like Borderood household, I can't wait to look up mine, because, you know, we were, our home was built 96 years ago, and so that was not current best practices in water piping, for sure. So I assume a lot of residents would have those questions and be eager to look their residence up, and
Yeah.
And their neighbors, for that matter, or prospective homes that they might be looking at.
Right, and the one house that we did find, the lead service line on the customer's side was built in like 1905.
Wow, yeah.
So sometimes you are going to find it in, in older homes. But that's not to say that we always know what the contractor used for the material on any home.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful.
So when lead service lines are found, we have to provide notification to the property owner and tenant. So we meet, we, our, our preferred method is to actually meet with whoever is residing at that house. We have the customer sign a form acknowledging the meeting, and we hand over the materials that are, that we're required to provide them with. If we're not able to meet with them, we leave the door hanger asking them to contact us. If the resident is not the owner, the resident receives materials and a pitcher, like a pitcher, and information is sent via certified mail to the owner, because we have to document that we've provided both of them the information. All literature and filter, and a filter pitcher, pitcher is sent via certified mail to the occupant if they do not contact us within 10 business days. And this is only for the ones where we do find lead.
On either side, whether it's the?
On either side.
Okay.
So some of the information we provide, we provide information on steps the customer can take to reduce their exposure. We provide a filtered water pitcher and six months of filters. We offer a free lead test of the water if the lead service is fine, found, and we schedule the service line for replacement if it's on our side. But we do have to wait 45 days to replace a lead service line on our side, and I think that's to allow, they don't really tell us why in the, the, the regulation, but we believe it's to allow the customer time to choose if they want to hire a contractor to replace their site as well, while we're all out there tearing up the street and the yard right in front of their house. And what, we have to wait 45 days unless it's an emergency. And you have to also think, we're going to have the water off, it is going to disturb, the lead line is going, going to disturb, and we'll probably release more lead at that time, so we really do want to give them time to make preparations.
Lisa, real quick, too, let's say lead is found, notification provided to a landlord and a tenant.
Right.
Is there civil liability on behalf of, to your knowledge, I'm kind of new to this, if the landlord receives notice that they have lead pipes and they don't replace them?
I do not know that, that is not addressed in this regulation. It's more that for the tenant to be able to have that information, though, that, that house they're living in has that. The one person didn't seem concerned, that, that we did talk to.
Didn't seem concerned that it was lead, they were going to continue going with the lead?
Yeah.
All right.
So, and it was a tenant, the tenant did not seem very concerned about it.
Oh, okay.
You, you mentioned here the steps taken, and one of them is providing filtered water pitcher and six months of filters. I'm assuming that's at no cost to the resident.
Correct.
And then from my own notification, as we're talking about this, because I don't know what amount of lead is coming into my kitchen faucet, and I, you know, I don't know if my faucet itself was manufactured after 2014 when it was allowed to do that, what, is there any specific type of filter that general people, as they are waiting to find out? What, is there any specific type of filter that general people, as they are waiting to find out?
I think any type of charcoal filter.
So, and if I'm going into your future slides, let me know. So there is lead on the customer's side, whether it be a tenant or an owner. And said tenant or owner cannot, I don't, I mean, I don't know what the cost point is to replace said lines. But what happens if they cannot?
If the, so we are going to talk about funding?
All right, come on.
So this is just some examples of the communication that we do give out. So we have general information so that as our staff is out there, if somebody walks up and goes, hey, what are you doing? They have something to be able to hand them so that we're giving a consistent message out and that we don't have multiple people communicating their version of this information. If we find a lead service line and the resident occupant is not home, we leave that door hanger, the red one, on their door, and we ask them to call us back. If we don't hear from them again in 10 business days, we mail them the literature and the filtered pitcher certified mail to them. And all our information is Spanish and English. This is also some additional information. We give them flushing protocols, how to flush to help reduce their exposure. And also we give them the dangers of lead. And it's kind of cut off at the bottom, but both of them have website information where they can go for some additional information. One of the unique things about this regulation is if we turn your water off for any reason, we have to either know the service line material, we have to identify the sort of service line material while we're out there, or we have to notify you to flush before turning the water back on. And this is for any reason. So if we turn your house, if we turn your water meter off because we're fixing a water main and we need to turn off the water meters because we're going to be chlorinating that line, before we can turn your water, that meter back on, we either have to know that you have gotten the information to flush, or we have to identify that service line, or we have to know what that service line material already is. The problem with that is so many of the, so much of the time we're doing that in the middle of the night. So most likely, you're going to get a door hanger that tells you, you should go ahead and flush. Because our staff is just not going to have the time in those emergency situations to determine what everybody's service line material is. The other time you might see this, if we turn somebody off for non-payment, we can't turn them back on until we know that they've gotten this flushing information, or we know what the service line material is, or we know, or we have time to identify what this service line material is. If we turn somebody off just as a normal turn-off and somebody moves back into that house and they want us to turn their water on, again, all that has to be, we have to know where they're at. So we've also gone to the step of training the call center when they have somebody call and say, hey, my water's off. And if we know it's off because we've been doing any type of work out there, turn-off, just a regular turn-off, a turn-off for non-payment, a turn-off because we're working on the service line, to relay the flushing information to them as well and document that we've relayed that flushing information to the customer.
Something that disturbs me with what you just said. If the customer gets their water turned off and before we can turn it back on, how do we know they can afford, I mean, obviously they can't afford to fix the lines if there's lead in it. So what happens there? Are they going to be without water for whatever length of time or what?
No, it really is on us. This is really just if without meter gets turned off, we have to either know what that service line material is. I mean, the material can be anything, but we have to know what it is. Or we have to be able to identify what it is. Or we have to just be able to tell the customer they need to flush their water line before they start using the water again. So it's not, it's not like they've got to replace the line before we can turn that water on. We just have some additional steps we have to take before they can turn that water back on.
Because that was what was my hang-up on this, is somebody can't pay their water bill. How are they going to afford to fix the lines outside their homes if there is lead there?
Right, and it would still allow them to turn their water back on. And if we were, if we have the time to identify it and we identify it as having lead, we're going to give them the pitcher, we're going to do all the other material we're required to give them as we turn that water back on. But it does not mean they have to replace their lines before their water gets turned back on. So one of the things that we also worked on is we had, the Housing Department, Galen was there. We had the Health Department at meetings, we had Utilities, we had IT there, we had Communications there. And we were talking about, we really needed to have one lead awareness webpage where we had, where people who typed in lead, it took them to the lead awareness. And then from there, they could branch out to the other departments that handle or have some involvement in lead. And so we did that, and we have direct links to all the different departments, Housing, Health, and Utilities. We have frequently asked questions on that page. And we have the EPA's lead website if somebody so chooses to go there and wants to look. And in the future, we'll have the searchable map, a link to the searchable map so they can use that as well. But we didn't want people to have to scramble between multiple pages to try and figure out where the information was that they wanted. So testing of schools and childcare and facilities. Testing of schools and daycares, that has to begin after October 16th of 2024. And then we have to test 20% of all elementary, which is considered eighth grade and younger. And licensed childcare facilities have to be tested each year. We're going to choose to test all those schools and all those licensed childcare facilities in year one. That will not stop us from having to test another 20% of the ones we just tested the following year. Because the rule is that you have to test at least 20. But we did not want to have the one school that there might be some issue, be that the school we're testing in year five. So we just thought, we're going to test everybody in year one and know where we stand right there and then. Schools and childcare facilities have to be tested once every five years. It excludes schools and childcare facilities that were built or have had their plumbing replaced since January 1st of 2014. The results of the testing and public education information must be provided to each school, childcare, primacy agency, and local or state health department. When we created this PowerPoint presentation, we had 40 public and private schools and 84 licensed childcare facilities.
Wow.
So the testing protocol's also changed a little bit. We are now going to be testing 100 sites every year. We start with tier one, which means any location that we've identified as having lead. Tier two are locations identified as having the galvanized lines requiring replacement. Tier three is anything unknown, and tier four is really other. We use the 90th percentile, which is what we do right now. So we're going to put all the test results from the highest to the lowest, and we're going to count up and take the 90th one. And that determines what our action level is. So if our trigger level is 10 parts per billion, then the replacement goal is set by the state. We've not heard what that will be. And then specific wording is required on our consumer confidence reports. Action level, 15 parts per billion, we have to replace 3% of the required lines annually. And specific wording is required on the consumer confidence report. And then again, we have to test 20% of the schools annually.
Quick question.
Yes.
Just comparing this to an earlier slide that I noted, for the corrosion control plan, it states that part of that is notifying the customer when lead pipes or their water has tested above 15 parts per billion. Is that intentionally at the action level and not the trigger level when you notify based on the corrosion control plan?
So they left the action level the same with the older regulation and with this regulation, but they added that trigger level in at the 10 parts per billion that you actually have to start doing something now.
Gotcha, okay.
So there are future decisions that have to be made. Responsibility for replacement of service lines on property owner's side of the meter. We still don't know what our inventory results are going to be. So we're kind of, you know, in a holding pattern there. The cost, how much is that really going to be, and a source of funding. Testing for lead, we're completing free of charge if lead is found. But what if other people want their water tested just because? And are we going to charge them, and are we going to charge them the full cost? Right now, that's running about $40 a test. And the other thing is that EPA continues to issue rule revisions and guidance, which may alter current processes and decisions. We're expecting some either new rules or some guidance coming out in July or August of this year. We're expecting that same thing to happen next year during the summertime. The only thing they've guaranteed everyone that will not change is that service line inventory and the date that it's due.
Is, have we heard any rumblings of the potential for maybe federal funding to offset the cost of said lead tests?
Yeah, on the, next slide. So replacing the lines are expensive. I mean, they're expensive for us, they're expensive for the customers as well. So in our CIP, we did request $5 million just to help on the city side to replace lines. We're estimating that would only be about $833. We're hoping we don't find $833, but if we did, we would have the money to do that. We believe it'll cost about $5,000 to replace on the customer's side of the line. If you think about it, we haven't hit downtown yet. Almost everything's under concrete. So we'll slow down when we get to those areas of trying to determine what's on either side. But if you have to replace those lines, we're tearing, we're going through sidewalk, street, all sorts of things to get there. Many customer service lines are galvanized, which could require replacement. Additional investigation is we're going to have to do to determine if the city ever had a lead service line in front of that galvanized line. The city has submitted a pre-application to the Texas Water Development Board for a loan for $20 million with a 51% forgiveness to assist with replacing the required lines for both the city and the customer. And if approved, we'll be asked to submit a full application in July with approval and closing in or after December. One thing to note is that Housing also has some funding that can be used to help with some of this. And so I think our initial discussion has been is when we get to the point where somebody has called and said, hey, I want to get my line replaced, I've got galvanized, y'all had lead in front of it, you know, back in 1950, that we're going to send them to Housing first to let them explore what those options are for them there first. And then if they are not able to fund them there, then they would come back to us to look, if we get this loan, to look at what funding is available for us to assist them.
That is going to be my question. As we are, I know we are repairing and building, rebuilding some homes. Are we at that particular, at this particular time that we're doing this, are we checking to see if there's lead pipes in those particular homes? We are?
Galen says yes.
Okay, good.
I'm going to say, I'm sure we are.
I didn't know.
So literally, we have been having almost, if not monthly, sometimes twice a month, meetings with Housing and with Health and IT and Communications to try and roll out the best plan that we can with the resources we have. And I will also say this while I've got it, the app that Eric and his team developed and the dashboard far beats anything on the market right now that other entities are selling. So it is really snazzy. So we did kind of a Gantt chart. It's not very readable, it looks like to me. But just so you know, service line inventory, that has to be done by October 24th. That Texas Water Development Board loan application, we're hoping to have all that finalized by the end of the year. Testing of schools and daycares, that cannot begin until after that October 24th date. We will have a year to get that testing done. The new testing criteria for water, that is just going to go on. And it begins October of '24 as well. Annual notification for lead or galvanized requiring replacement. So if you choose to keep your lead line and/or you keep your galvanized line that we know, we either never could determine whether or not there was lead or you did have lead on the city side at one time, we will have to notify you with all the material every single year until that line is replaced. We will have to do an annual validation of the service line inventory, which would be any new connections that we have as well as any of those line replacements that may have occurred. So every year, we're going to be validating that. And every year, we're going to do that annual 20% testing of schools and daycares. And that will just keep going on. We'll have that annual notification, the annual validation, and the annual testing.
I guess this question is for Galen. Galen, there's a lot of schools, there are a few schools that are going to be closed this year. And there's expansion of some of the elementary schools. Are we working with the developers to make sure that the pipes do not contain lead or...
Well, as far as what we're doing is on the residential side. And so we're working with, as homes are being built, we're working to ensure that they are, they're not using pipes that would contain lead-based paint and more so using the PVC and those alternatives. But as far as commercial properties or schools go, we have not been involved in that process.
So there are regulations in place now that they could not go in and put material in that is prohibited. But I don't know that there are regulations in place that require them to replace that material. I don't know why they wouldn't, but especially if they're updating that whole school.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that because I know there's going to be quite a few schools that are being expanded to take up room for the elementary schools that are being closed. And I was just wondering if the developers are working with us as far as inspection of the lead pipes and the water lines going to the older schools that are being expanded.
Alta Vista was built in 1910, the core of it.
Yeah, they're closing that one, I think, this year.
They're about to close though, right?
Yeah, and they're going to South Waco, my understanding. I'm not really sure, but I followed one of the WISD school board meetings. But I was, I was just wondering if these older schools that are being expanded...
We'll get, we'll talk to you.
Are we working with them?
Code and others to inspections to determine whether or not that's something that they're looking for and get that information back to you. I know from utility side, we will still test those schools unless they can show us that they've replaced all their internal plumbing and their service lines.
Okay. I was just wondering, getting the same question about the new housing and the rehabs and all that we're doing.
Yes, now from a rehab standpoint, we are checking those lines. And if we're going in and seeing galvanized pipe, that's one of our priority repairs when we're doing rehab is replacing those lines, so.
Okay, thank you.
So just key points throughout this presentation has been that we have, we are currently monitoring, the Health Department monitors, Housing monitors, Utilities monitors. We have been monitoring for lead in our community. We have been doing testing. And we have a corrosion control plan currently in place that has been effective to date based on the current rules. The lead and copper rule revision, where it does have expanded testing, has the service line inventory and replacement, new action limits and testing of schools and daycares. And we've utilized a lot of our resources to come up with the plan that we currently have in place, which is IT, Housing, Health, Communications, and Utilities, the Texas Water Development Board, EPA, and TCEQ. Any questions?
Any questions for staff, guys?
So many questions, but probably not enough time. Thank you for all your good work in implementing these new mandates and ensuring that we can at least identify lead pipes where they exist in our community and replace them on our side. So thank you all, appreciate it. And great, great work on the IT side, that's a fascinating database.
Appreciate it.
We'll be able to maybe perhaps get informal reports, updates, I don't know, as you move forward in this. And perhaps, Eric, you might want to consider monetizing your dashboard and that would pay.
No, we don't want to lose him.
That would pay for the lead pipes that we need to take, I mean, I'm just saying.
Sell it to Dallas.
Go is all I'm saying.
That, no, actually, that, look.
I mean, it is possible that we could let council, I mean, Eric has to do it, have access to the dashboard too, if you want to be able to view that information when you...
We can share that link with you all.
Cool.
We'll drop it in a weekly.
Or just an update, as we get to 50% and 75%, we'd kinda curious to see what the penetration...
Yeah, I just wanna kinda know, just, not, not every moment of your update, but just, you know, impactful notes to keep us informed and how we can help push the message.
Okay.
Great presentation, Lisa, Eric, great Gantt chart in there, by the way. And the dashboard...
I was gonna ask if you incorporated that Gantt chart specifically cuz you knew Holmes was acting mayor today.
Exactly, exactly. And that dashboard, man, if there's a way we can use that for code enforcement and inspections, let's do that too.
We actually do? There's, if you look on the city website, there's a code enforcement dashboard as well.
Great dialogue, guys. Thanks for the presentation. Bradley, next.
Sounds good. Thank you all. Galen, thanks for the guest appearance. Our next work session, work session 437, which is a discussion of Mary Avenue solid waste enclosure improvements. This presentation, I believe, will be a short one. We'll see, Cody Patel is joining us, Director of Solid Waste. It'll present the existing conditions along Second, Third Street, along Mary Avenue and also present the proposed improvements to enclose the trash collection along Mary Avenue. If you haven't been by there, the pictures might be shocking. There is an accompanying resolution on the business agenda later this evening that would award construction of the proposed improvements that Cody's gonna show you, and that resolution is number 478. Cody, you've got the floor.
All right, thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Cody Patel, Director of Solid Waste. Today, we are going to provide an update on Mary Avenue's solid waste enclosure improvements. So, as Mr. Ford mentioned, this is at Second and Mary and Third and Mary. We're going to look at improving the solid waste collection from the state it is in today. So, for the outline, and feel free to just ask questions as we move through, but for the outline, we're gonna go over the coordination with the key stakeholders in the area, business owners, as well as the coordination with the Downtown Implementation Plan Team, existing operations and conditions, current design and the renderings, as well as cost and timeline. So, before we talk about the Downtown Implementation Plan Coordination, I was gonna bring up the coordination we had with business owners in this area. Kind of a big thank you to Miro Rodriguez, Jed Cole, and Ginger Townley with Niffa's, Brazos River Capital, and Paramount Realty. We engaged that team early in the process to make sure that we were going to create a design that was good for the city of Waco solid waste operation, as well as our customers and the visitors in the area. So, they were very instrumental in providing feedback so we could put a good product together. And then, as we progressed in our design, we reached out to the Downtown Implementation Plan Team and made sure we ran our designs by them. So, we were just heading off into left field and we were making sure that we were gonna create a long-term solution. So, when a project for Mary Avenue does come down the lane, that we're not going to have to tear out what we did or majorly revise what we did. So, putting the money at good use. So, Mary Avenue is designated as an activated street within the Downtown Implementation. And so, these next few slides are directly pulled from the Downtown Implementation Plan. So, Mary Avenue is, like I said, activated as, selected as a activated street from University Parks to Eighth Street. And this is just an overview of the downtown and the designations for the main thoroughfares. Here is our prioritization matrix within that plan, showing Mary Avenue as the eighth-ranked project and a phase-two priority project. And so, that activated street is from Third Street to Eighth Street, so it's just right outside the limits of our enclosure project. And then, that project description within the implementation plan. So, again, Mary Avenue is classified as an activated street. That's gonna have similar infrastructure as your entertainment streets and your shared streets, but there will be additional infrastructure to have special events, special events in the future, that, brick paver paving, water and food hook, water and food, sorry, water and electric hookups for food trucks, getting tongue-tied there, curbless cross-sections to make mobility and walkability a little bit easier in that area as that, as that project does come along. And then additionally, Mary Avenue will be designated as a bike facility to provide that safe route through, in that connection through the downtown area. So, moving on to the existing conditions, here's our conditions at Second and Mary Avenue. As Mr. Ford mentioned, they're not exactly the most sightly conditions and it's probably the least favorite collection point of all of our services within our operations team. So, there is already an existing enclosure at Second and Mary. Those, we have some very large steel doors that are there to secure the facility. They are hard to open, they are hard to close, so generally, they just stay open. So, the facility, like I said, it's very hard to secure. So, we're gonna look at fixing that in the future. And we're also servicing that area with 300-gallon plastic carts, so that, those are serviced with our residential fleet rather than a commercial fleet. There's not a lot of downtown residential other than apartments, which aren't serviced with that same type of truck. So, it's kind of off-road, it's not a very efficient operation, rolling those carts along those pavers and you can see the rails in front of that collection point is challenging for our staff. So, looking at changing that collection to a compactor rather than those multiple 300-gallon carts. And then, you see those grease traps, we're looking at moving those into the enclosure as well. So, moving on to Third and Mary, this is pre-existing and existing conditions. So, the, on the picture on the left is a compactor that was used to service the majority of this area before March of 2020. There was a hotel project that was slated for that property, and so, solid waste removed that compactor and put these front-load dumpsters along Mary Avenue in March of 2020 so we can continue to provide that service for our customers. So, as we move forward with this project and we complete the construction, we'll be able to remove those 300-gallon carts, place a large compactor, and we'll place a front-load compactor at Third Street, Third and Mary, and we'll be able to remove these front-load dumpsters. So, we'll be able to open up a little bit of parking and make that, that Mary Avenue just look a little bit cleaner, a little bit nicer for people walking around that downtown area. So, gonna move into the renderings and what the design looks like. So, we had, we showed the current versus the proposed. Again, you can see that for the proposed, we are going to that, keep that red brick look for the enclosure, cuz it fits really nicely with, within that whole Mary, Mary Avenue corridor. We are removing those steel doors. We're gonna go back with, it's gonna be a chain-linked gate, but we are gonna put black mesh and like a fake ivy to make it more visual appealing. So, he'll be a little bit more lightweight, so our operation team can open and close it easily and our customers can do as well, so that way, we can secure the site, so we don't have to worry as much about illegal dumping and scavenging. And you can see the grease traps, they're not in the rendering and those are being moved in. But one thing I do wanna point out is the rendering does not show rails. That's just an oversight, we're not removing the rails with this project. There's another view of that. And so, on the current, where you see the grease traps, those, we're actually going to be, our trucks are gonna be coming straight into where those are sitting. So, we're doing quite a bit of concrete work, removing a lot of those brick pavers, because they just won't hold up to the weight of our trash trucks, so we're gonna put some reinforced concrete through that area. Essentially, it will look like sidewalk, but it is gonna be more of a drive approach. Moving on to Third and Mary, this is right behind Niffa's Restaurant. You can see that we have a wood privacy fence here that we're gonna remove and go back with that same, that same red brick style, and again, the same type of lightweight gate. One thing to mention is you can see there is a light pole and a, and an out-of-date electrical outlet or pedestal right behind there. Those are being removed because it's right, right and direct path of where, how we can access this dumpster. But there are floodlights and security lights on that building, as well as about 40 feet, 50 feet to the right out of the frame, there is another pedestrian light. So, to go over the cost and timeline, this is, the green for this Gantt chart is the items we are currently through. So, we are at council consideration, as Mr. Ford mentioned. We have a resolution to award the construction contract, 2023-478, for the lowest responsible bidder, Barsh Company, and the total bid, a little bit over $220,000. If, you know, if that is awarded this evening, we will move straight into contract execution and then ride into notice proceed and construction. We anticipate the project taking about four months or so, unless we have any hiccups with materials or anything like that. With that, I'd like to finish up with, we're, solid waste team is very excited to get this project started and completed. The whole collection at Second and Mary and Third and Mary is an eyesore and it's, we're ready to, we're ready to get that behind us to where we have more efficient operation and our, our customers and our visitors in that area and have a, have a more enjoyable experience. So, with that, any questions or comments?
Any comments, guys?
I know our, our mayor would, is not here today, but would probably approve of this if, if I know him. I think it greatly improves the aesthetics there so that we don't have a sub dumpster district there within our downtown district. And man, that, those ivy fences, I mean, that, that looks Instagram selfie-worthy right there. I might be the first one, no, no, I'm getting a no. Okay, but I, I might venture one. But I'm all for it. I say, go for it.
Not to get in the weeds, but like, is the, where the, where you're changing the concrete for the grease traps, is it gonna be a stained concrete, so it doesn't look like nasty grease-stained concrete?
So, the grease traps are gonna go inside the enclosure, and so, they're gonna be secured. They're not gonna be out in the, visible.
I'm glad we're working on that, you know, when you go down there and you look at it and you think, okay, what can I do to make this better? And then, you get comments from your folks, your constituents, that say, you want me to fix my area, why don't you fix your area? You know, we get, we get that a lot, especially with city-owned lots that have overgrown weeds and stuff. And when we tell them, you gotta cut your grass, and they come back at us with something. So, I'm glad this is something less that I don't have to answer questions about. It's gonna look pretty, or reasonably pretty. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Cody. Yeah, I like how we keep referring to this as an activated street and it's lots of big plans for Mary. I mean, it's easy to dream around this street as a pedestrian path and the connectivity to the Mary Street Bridge. And the city has some property along the way in the history of that railroad that goes right down the middle of that street. And I'm happy there's, there's really been organic growth there too. We've got two, at least two new hotels going in there that haven't, haven't, are scheduled to open up over the next year, two years. The Mary Avenue Market and the River Square Center are both active. So, I'm, that, this Mary Street has always appealed to me as a, as a cool little place that we can, we can activate, and it's an activated street, so we're there. Anyway, good work on this. It's a nice start to get the, to get these garbage places kind of cleaned up.
A lot of tourists use that area. When I've gone by there, going to the Dr. Pepper Museum, and depending on where they park downtown, I've seen a lot of tourists using the Mary Avenue coming down towards Second, Second Streets. I'm, I'm glad we're, we're doing something about that. It just makes the tourists feel, you know, hey, this city, the citizens and the staff really care about their city. So, that, that's a plus for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sit, Bradley.
Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody. Our last one is Clint Peters, Director of Development Services. Got one public hearing to cover.
One?
One lonely public hearing. Close us out, Clint.
All right, so we do just have the one. This is a rezoning out in the Highway 84 corridor for approximately 25 acres, right on our city limits at Old Arena Road and Church Road out in 84 Corridor. This is a, a portion of the Sun West development that's been developing since the early 2000, 2000, starting from Harris Creek and then working its way back to Old Arena Road. And this is a portion of the development that is a higher-density type use. You can see in our land use plan, you can see that orange color, that's a medium-density designation. And so, what they're requesting to change from R1B to R3C, which is a multifamily, medium-density zoning, fits in with the comprehensive plan. This is about 25 acres out of about 80 acres at that corner, and we anticipate the rest of that 60 acres to develop for commercial, maybe more mixed-use in the future. And then, you see the zoning map, it's currently a single-family, but anticipate that all of this portion between the duplexes and Old Arena Road will transition to a higher-density zoning. And then, there's some pictures of the property, it's currently vacant. This is looking from Church Road up Old Arena, and then you can see where it's close to the 84 intersection with Old Arena Road. We didn't have any speakers or opposition to this at the Plan Commission hearing, and Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote of seven to zero. And that's all we have.
This one, yeah, there was a lot, there's lots of activity in this area of Waco, and it's a, it's a key growth area, as you said, Clint, at the crossroads of West Highway 84 and Old Arena Road and Spiegelberry Road, lots of development out there. And we hit pause on this one, I think, last week, just to be sure that we were kind of on the same page as the developer. And I think that meeting did occur, and then, and as, as far as we can see, the developers intending to have a thoughtful quality development there, so.
Yep.
Great, thanks, Clint.
Sure.
Bradley, anything else? That's it. This completes the review of the work session items. Are there any requests for future agenda items, guys? Any future agenda items? Do you have one, Jennifer?
No, sir. We're just trying not to get in trouble for talking too much, like we did last night.
And by the way, this doesn't happen often, that a mayor pro tem steps into the mayor's seat, but I was wrong. When you're sitting in that seat, I'm supposed to address you as mayor.
Oh, really?
So, the next time it happens...
Did you get him straight, Jennifer?
I'll be, yeah, Jennifer. Then, Michelle seconded the motion.
Okay.
And so, next time, I'll know better.
Call me whatever you want to.
Mayor.
We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:07 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. House Bill 2127 passed in the 88th regular session of the Texas Legislature. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 55.07087. We are now in executive session.